I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Regional School Committee. First roll call, Wayne Adams, yes, Joanna Blanchard.
Here.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Falzani.
Here.
Dick Hodges.
Here.
Lisa O'Connor.
Here.
Chris Redding. Deena Trada. Thank you.
3.4.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's see, Deena Trada?
Yep.
Here.
Here. Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion on the floor to accept the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Opposed? Now we're gonna take a look at three minutes. The Budget Workshop, January 29th, 2019. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Motion and a...
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And the second minutes, the Business and Finance Meeting, February 5th, 2019. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion.
And a...
Second.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And lastly, the Business Meeting, February 5th, 2019. Do I have a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Moved. With a second discussion? No? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Now, we will, as we've started recently, two times, for a public comment. This will be the first time we'll hear from the public if somebody would like to say something at this point. Public? Another quiet, tough crowd over there. Yeah, thank you. And Dr. Bartholomew, you all settled then?
Not nearly.
Okay, would you like to start us off with the news?
Sure, absolutely. First, I'd just like to thank everybody for being here this evening. As we know, at the start of the year, we wanted to make sure the school committee was exposed to all the things that were going on in different, all the different schools. So tonight, we have a presentation coming to us from Merrimack Schools. So I'm gonna turn it over now to Mr. Marino, who's gonna talk a little bit about what we're about to see and some of the amazing work that's being done at Merrimack Schools.
Sure, so as you guys know, for the last four or five years, we have been pursuing the IB Primary Years Program. There are a couple of parts of the program that we don't talk about as much as I think you should. Specifically, the program talks about two things. It talks about raising global citizens, people who are able to contribute to the world outside of their own worldview. And the second part is taking action and finding ways to make the world better. So our first unit of our sixth grade year is a unit on teaching topics. And what our kids are asked to do is they're asked to work together, find a segment of the population who can be supported through instruction and through community outreach. And our kids are encouraged to think outside of the topics that are most commonly thought of, racial tolerance, sexual identity, gender identity, those sorts of things. Think about different topics of groups who we can learn more about, who need support, who need understanding, and who can benefit from people looking out for them. So we have a myriad of different groups, and one thing that I found over the last two years when this tolerance unit came about is I had, we had a lot of kids coming to me and other people in the school saying, "Hey, can we put these posters up? Hey, can we run this fundraiser? Hey, can we do this? Can we do that?" That was a lot. So one thing that we did this year was we tried to focus it a little bit more, and we capped off our tolerance unit with any group who was interested in pursuing their tolerance project further. Take it to the next step. They presented to the fifth and sixth grade. And we gave the fifth and sixth grade an opportunity to select the tolerance project that they wanted to adopt as a school. So tonight, we have Haven Cahill and Gabby Mennelus to present to you their tolerance project on supporting foster children. What up, Gabby and Haven? And I do wanna thank Sue Simmons for taking on the role of supporting them and helping them bring their tolerance project to life. And I also wanna thank all the great people over here who are important folks in these kids' lives and helping them take their steps along the way.
Good evening, I am Haven.
And I am Gabby.
For our tolerance for diversity project, we chose foster children. We chose this group because we both have personal experiences.
My personal experience at my mother's, the foster parent, and I and my two brothers are foster children. My foster mom won Golden Award for being an amazing foster child.
And mine is that I know a lot of foster kids, like Gabby's foster brothers, and I have friends who are foster children.
A foster child's child does not live with their biological parents. This is because the family cannot take care of a child at the time, such as providing them with a safe home, food, clothes, and comfort.
Or they might be mistreating the child. This includes verbal abuse and physical abuse. We and other people can't imagine this could happen to us kids, but it does.
Just because a foster child is in need of a better home doesn't mean they can treat it any better. Many foster children experience discrimination each day. One form of discrimination that foster children face is being bullied. Boys especially pick on foster children because they think that they're different from everyone else. As my partner Haven says...
A foster child might be the nicest kid you'll ever meet. Another form of discrimination foster children face is that they sometimes get treated unfairly in their foster homes. For example, a foster parent sometimes treats their biological child better than their foster child. This can lead to depression and self-abuse.
There are people out there who help foster children. For instance, there are organizations that take foster children under their wing, protect them. Stanions is one of them. Stanions started off as an orphanage, improved over the years. Right now, kids of all ages who need a place to stay go there, and staff provide the kids with food, clothes, and comfort. Not only that, they provide education for kids of all ages and grades. This place is also used as a visitation center for foster kids to visit their biological family. Most children have disabilities, such as autism. Stanions is an amazing place for children to improve, such as my brother who has severe autism.
Share Living is another organization that helps foster children. They provide many activities for people of all ages and abilities, like horseback riding, bowling, and ice skating.
At Share Living, there is no such thing as normal. Matter of fact, there is no one on this planet who is normal. Everybody is different. That's what makes us humans. Like there's snowflakes. They're all snowflakes. They all have the same thing, but no two are the same. They all have different beauty, and they all fall differently. That's what it's like at Share Living. All of our differences is what makes us whole. You'll try to be someone else because being you is all you need to be. Be proud that you are you, don't be ashamed of who you are.
Other people who help foster children are therapists. Therapists are people who talk to others when they're going through hard times. This is extremely helpful for foster children because they have been through so much, and having a person to talk to can really help.
The Department of Children and Families, otherwise known as DCF, is a state organization that finds foster children good homes to live in until they can be adopted by a friend.
For our action plan, we'd like to help foster children by creating a safe place for them to visit with their biological family at DCF in April. We're working with Foster and Hope to raise money to purchase the equipment and supplies needed to furnish a visitation room at DCF in Bradford.
Here's a picture of the room we are sponsoring. This is what it'll look like after it's been renovated.
The estimated budget for the room is $880.
In November, we started a whole school fundraiser to raise the money to purchase the furniture and supplies.
We held a bank sale and it was very successful. We made $625, plus we recently received 200 more donations. All this money will go to the room and the visitation center. We need $880, only 55 more to go, and we need your help to get that money. Any extra money we receive will be donated for supplies such as books and games.
Our future plans are to work with Foster and Care and Westonberg, which have supplied drugs to fill backpacks with personal care items and basic necessities for children entering foster care.
May is National Foster Care Awareness Month. We will be organizing a foster care and adoption information night to raise awareness about foster children and to encourage more families to become foster parents. There are hundreds of foster children who need a safe and loving place to call home.
We hope you're all inspired to stand up with us and help foster children.
So all school committee members, do you wanna help us help foster children? Think about it. Thank you.
So, school committee, I just wanted to, again, another round of applause for Gabby. One of the coolest things is that we have students that are for these opportunities because typically, we get caught up in the data, the testing, what's going on in the curriculum. We forget about we're part of the community. And it's clear what Gabby and Haven just said, they have not forgotten that part, and I hope that you guys never forget that part, that you two made a huge difference. Like this is, this is amazing. The work you're doing is not helping just one people. One person is helping a whole bunch of people. So from the bottom of my heart, on behalf of Kentucky, thank you, thank you, thank you. Excellent work, excellent work. Anybody have any questions?
Oh, great job.
Good job.
Good hearts.
Thank you for coming with us tonight. And Mr. Marino, do you have anything else? Would you share with us?
I just wanna say that this is really what we hope, when we think about the philosophy of what the PYP is and the underpinnings of the mindset that we're trying to... We're trying to raise kids to think beyond themselves, to use skills, use the knowledge, and use the understanding that they develop within our school to impact others in a positive way. It's not just about their achievement. It's not just about their achievement in reading or their achievement in science, DCE, or social studies. It's really about how can they leverage their learning to make a world better for them. That's really what, for me, that's what education is all about. It's not just about what we learn, it's about what we do with what we learn. And this is a perfect example of how, even at a very young age, these kids are just 11, 10, 11, 12, even at a very young age, they can have big ideas. And given the right supports, all the people sitting in the chairs over here, sitting behind me, classroom teachers, Ms. Davis, hopefully I can help out a little bit with the support of the people around them. They can make a difference starting now, and hopefully that's a ball that starts rolling downhill and picks up steam as they go too. So I wanna thank you guys for inviting all the schools out to present to you this year. I think it's a great addition. I think it's great to share what we're doing in schools. So look forward to doing it again sometime in the future.
School committee, would anybody have a question or comment they'd like to make to Principal Marino at this time?
Well done.
We're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. Bartholomew, as we continue.
Great.
Your goals and update.
Yeah, so I think I, long ago, I submitted to you my goals of what I wanted to accomplish this year, and it's very hard to follow up that act, and I'm not going to attempt it. But every couple of months, I'm gonna go through and just let you know where we are with things. I have four overall goals for this year for myself as superintendent. First goal was professional practice goal, and that's new superintendent induction program, and the checkpoints there were to make sure I attended all meetings, completed all assignments. I have attended all meetings and completed all assignments. My Jane Conley is my mentor, and she and I meet frequently. So that part, that's an update to this. My second goal is effective entry and direction setting, so that's a district improvement goal. And that's part of what you're gonna see tonight in just a little bit about the entry plan and progressing through that entry plan. Third goal, maintaining momentum during the transition. There's nothing worse than when a new superintendent comes in, or a new teacher comes in, or a new principal comes in, that everything's on a standstill and no one knows where things are going. So what we've been doing is, we, I, to make sure that doesn't happen, we meet with principals on a consistent basis. It had been every other week, and then we stripped it to every week, and we're gonna head back to every other week soon. We do walkthroughs together, we look at walkthrough data, we talk about what we're seeing in the classroom. And this goal is a student learning goal. So all of that is just making sure that the practices of what's going on in the classroom continues the way it's supposed to continue. The evaluations, Mr. Conway worked very closely with all the teachers and administrators, making sure they, people understand what the new evaluation process is, how it's supposed to be done. And in terms of the administrators being evaluated, the administrators can tell you that they have filled out all their goals at the start of the year. They did a self-assessment, created goals. Mid-year, I meet with them, and at the end of the year, we finish up, see how well they progressed towards those goals and what they might be able to carry over to the following year. And the final goal is fair, effective classroom teacher evaluation. And again, that ties into what I already mentioned that was included in the other goals. We wanna make sure that what's happening in the classroom is high quality and that there's people around there monitoring. We have collected data from a couple hundred walkthroughs, and that's, those walkthroughs now, in some of the buildings, the principals have invited other teachers to walk through with them during their planning periods, to go look at other classrooms and just have conversations about what they're seeing in the classroom, what do they like, what they might change, what are good trends. It's just to have reflective type of walkthrough. It's not a "I gotcha," it's much more of a learning experience for those teachers. So that is the four goals, so we are moving along, or I am moving along pretty decently on those. There is one part, we have not gone into videos, we prefer to use real life as opposed to videos. So instead of a group of us sitting watching a video and trying to make sure we're aligned, we'll go into a classroom with a select group, so a select number of observations. We'll come out of that classroom and have a conversation to see why were we off, if we were off, or are we on the same page? So that's a really important thing, if we're gonna do effective evaluation, give teachers good feedback on what we're seeing in the classroom. So that's an update on the goals. Now the next part is the entry plan. You have in front of you... Nice little report. And this is a collection of a tremendous amount of data. So beginning of the year, the entry plan is a big deal in the city of Tennessee. It sets the stage for what's going to happen down the road, over the next three to five years. So try to summarize it, because this is gonna be a lot to read and it's like... So I've got a PowerPoint here. All of this, I'm giving this to you first. I'm not, this is not out there publicly, I want you to read this, come back to questions. We have a meeting next Tuesday. If you have questions on this, ask. And once you've gone through this, I've answered any of your questions, and you've seen this, once we've gone through that, I'll post this up, I'll post this as well, and I'll put together a video just explaining to everyone what this is all about. The reality is, in this entry plan, the finest of entries, there was a lot of participation, and there's a lot of data. Here it is, the whole purpose of the entry plan is to set up, collect all the data, and find out what is going on in the district. It doesn't matter if you're brand new to the district or if you've been there. You need to sit there and look and be objective about what you're seeing in the classroom, outside of the classroom, from your perspective, from a parent's perspective, from a student's perspective, from state to other state. And all that information helps set the course for the next three to five years. So, four steps in this entry plan. First two, the second one is what I'm doing right now. The first one was developing the plan, in the plan that was developed, the first one was collecting all the data. And now we're at the analysis and sharing. The next part of this doesn't really start when everybody, starts April, that's what I handed you, and it takes effect in August. So at the August school committee meeting, I will bring to you a strategic plan. Now this should not be a shock to many teachers, not the school committee, because there is people who will be in, the school committee members and teachers will have a hand in helping create this district's entry plan. So all the data, you can read all that. Basically, there's four sources where this data came from. There's the DESI data, which you can get from their database. There's PRS data, which comes from our database, it also comes from programs like Naviance, so we get SAT scores, you can verify them over there. SAT scores, college trends, you can get all of that. Interview. So I sat down, much to my very ancient grin, trying to schedule, and talked to over 200 people, one-on-one and sometimes in small groups, to find out how they felt, how things were going. There were guiding questions that were there. I wanted to know what they felt like was going well, what they felt like they needed to change. But typically, if you sit with one person, they're going to tell you their story. And their story, and another person's story might be completely different, but what you're gonna find is that we have over 2,000 pieces of data, almost 2,000 stories, and there's these common themes that keep on coming up. So surveys, we put together, or I put together a survey, we had 204 teacher responses, 524 parent responses, and 1,234 student responses, which seems like an incredibly good number, and it is. The student responses, we only went from fifth grade through 12th grade. So if you figure there's 750 kids in the high school, that you have, would be a very good response. And then I had the fortune of coming into a situation where DESI had done a targeted review of Kentucky in February, February 12th, February 15th, by 2018. So I had information from them that talked about what they saw when they had their professionals walking through the classrooms and talking to teachers and students. So here's some of the data. If you have a question here... Stop me, I hate to read things, but I'm gonna read this, just so if you have a question, something seems off of you. So we know that enrollment since 2008 is down, it's down 26 percent. Transfers to other public schools. So a student who may have been attending Kentucky, and all of a sudden, they went to Drake, they went to Melrose, that would be a transfer out. So we've lost 33 students, we're down 33 percent in the number of students who have left. Students to a private high school. So this is one of the things growing up here, you have friends that would leave Kentucky to drive.
Sorry, I just wanted to, before you go too far. Transfers to other public schools are like via school choice, or...
No, it might be school choice. It includes school choice, but it's also, I don't know.
Oh.
There's some things you just...
The things that are like younger.
And we may not know what their reasons is, so it's not quoted in my list, it's just in the system. In private school, you have friends that would go to Phillips, Governor's, so we are down 75 percent.
But those are good things, right?
Yes. So again, and I'm sorry, in this document, you will read a sentence that I feel like is very important. Up or down? Up doesn't always mean good, and down doesn't always mean bad. It depends on your perspective, and it depends on what we're talking about. And I use as an example, a dropout rate. We would agree that dropout rate going down is a good thing. Dropout rate going up is bad. So yeah, transferring to private high schools, we only had six for this academic year that have transferred, from eighth grade to ninth grade. It was interesting to look at that data. In 2012, we had 32. So 2011 to 2015, those transfer numbers were up, they were pretty high, in the low to mid twenties. And then all of a sudden, in 2016, they dropped, and they started getting that into the 15s, 11s, and now we're in single digits. And one of the key things about this, it is not my job, my job is to present you this data so that you can see it, and you can draw some conclusions on your own. My job is not to interpret this data, I can give you my opinions on this, but it's not to interpret it. Dropout rate is down 1.5 percent, so just what does that mean? We were at 1.8 percent in 2010, we're now at 0.3 percent. And college rate attendance is about 13 and a half percent, which seems very high to go be able to go up that much, but there was, one particular year was not so good. So SAT scores, two different types of SATs. There's the old SAT, which started in 2005 and ended in 2016, and then there's now the new SAT, which we actually have 17, 18, and 19. So this includes data from the, I'm sorry, no, I don't think it includes January's. The 17, 18, so we have two years of data. So the old SAT, you can see, reading, math in total. Now, when you look at this slide, in the report, there's an asterisk on the total since 2011, 'cause it doesn't make sense that reading is down 14, math is down 3, but the total score is down 15. Because that doesn't, how is that possible? And the answer to that question is that when they show their charts, they don't divide it up as an entire school, they divide it up as male and female. So those get averaged together. And because they get averaged together, and they don't have a total score for the entire school, you might have had, in that, in those years, there might have been more males than females in one category. So one group might be having a greater deficit than another group, and that's what causes the average to get to 15 points below for combined. It's, I can show, I can share with you the chart. So the new SAT, the new SAT, for the reading, there's been no change, and for the math, we are up 12 points. So the total is up 12 points. MCAS and STE. STE is science and tech, science is just part of STEM, right? Science, technology, engineering, they're starting grades 5, 8, and 10, it should not be 89th grade because that would be a challenge. So the CPI is a composite index, includes all three through eight, but, so for ELA, since 2014, we were, from 2001 to 2014, we were down 1.1. For math, we were up 0.1. For CPI, and CPI, this composite goes all the way through 10th grade. So that composite, we were down 3.2. So fifth grade. Now these, you can measure 2001 all the way up to last year. Fifth grade, down 19 percent. Eighth grade, down 8, and 10th grade was up 1. And that is proficient or higher, and again, it's all in the span. So CPI, the composite index, so ELA for 10th grade is up 5 percent. For math, 10th grade, 'cause again, in high school, you have biology, math, and English. The math was down 8 percent, and the new generation, MCAS, so there's a old legacy and a new generation. The new generation is up 2 percent for English Language Arts, it's down 1 percent for math, and these last two pieces, I included. So I looked at where Kentucky was and where the state was, and remember the conversation that Mr. Conway and I had with you about the new test? And you can't necessarily compare one district to another because they're targets, they're measuring it based on targets, how long it's gone to targets. But for English Language Arts compared to the state, we were 3 percent below, and for math, we were 9 and a half percent below. One of my favorite topics, funding. You have some nice graphs there, we'll have one here in a second. Our operating budget has gone up 23.4 percent since fiscal year 2009. That gives us an annual increase of about 2.1 percent. That should mean a lot to everyone because there's a specific number we hope not to go over, and that number is? 2.5. 2.5. Now, I'll take this opportunity to mention, if you read in today's paper or yesterday's paper, you would see that New Report is seeking 3 and a half percent increase, and that Triton is somewhere near 4 percent. We have not, we're averaging 2.1. That is incredibly good news for our taxpayers. Now at the same time, while ours has gone up that much, you'll see the graph, and you'll see it here in a second, with the state's contribution. And I'm not talking about, we know our percentage has gone down, so we'd expect the amount of money we receive to go down at the same time, but it's a percentage of our operating budget. So it's gone down 10.74 percent. So if you, if they just funded us at the same percentage as what they always have, so if we had 20 students versus 2,000 students, the percentage, if the percentage was the same, that should not matter, that would have been an additional $4.2 million for this year. And that's really money that we just wouldn't have to take from the local taxpayers. And at that same time, the retail transportation has dropped. I had a great conversation last night, Mr. Abst and I were being with Senator DiGiuglio, and had a great conversation, and we tried, we were with Triton in North Andover at New Report, and pointed out, our population can decrease, but the kids are still living all over in our towns, you have to send buses out to get them. So we've dropped almost $200,000 in regional aid for transportation. This year, it was a big piece that we were going to get additional money for regional transportation aid, and when we got the check... money for regional transportation aid. And when we got the check, we were $20,000 less than what we were told we were going to get. And Senator Tarr mentioned, it had to do with, they were not getting the income from taxes that they'd expected, so they sent us less money. There's a, sorry, give me that.
Subject to appropriation.
Subject to appropriation. So this funding, they can write about it in the papers all they want, that this is what they're going to do, but there's always lines in these bills, subject to appropriation. So if for whatever reason, the money's not there, you did something naughty, or whatever it might be, they don't like you, it's subject to appropriation. If they don't appropriate to you, you don't get. So this first time around, we were $20,000 shy. Senator Tarr said we'd post, they'll fully fund it, which would be wonderful for us, because if we get the $20,000 plus, the negative $20,000 we're expecting we're gonna get, and the second check. Here's that graph. The green is what our towns are paying, and the black is what the state, these are percentages to make up the 100%. And you can see, they're going in the opposite directions. We're putting more burdens on the local governments and taxpayers, and less burden on the state, which...
So when is that gonna change?
When is that going to change? So...
I like the sounds of a class action suit by many communities and many superintendents.
Yeah. So, one of the nice things is that I think we have the MTA, MASs, and the MAMC are all joined together to try to work with the state to get this corrected. One of the questions is, is there a way to look at the funding formula to fix this funding formula? So just as an example, it doesn't matter what district you go to right now. I can predict, and this happened last night, North Andover superintendent said, every single district is paying about a third of their budget goes to special education. They can't afford the special transportation, and they know that it's a huge chunk of money, that he can predict those numbers for every single district. When is that accurate? Means that something has to change. In the Chapter 70 Fund, which was done, the form was done in 1993, it did not take into account special education, because they did not want to encourage districts to have kids, I over-identify, to get them more money. So it's not part of the formula. And as a result, we know, anyone in one of these schools knows, that special education has grown massively. And part of it is, technology has been able to pick it up, other parts, but we're seeing huge increases, social, emotional challenges. So you have all these different pieces. The state is not going to be able to figure out something like that. Although the discussion we had last night, where we kind of left it was, it'd be very nice to not try to fix the formula right now. I mean, they're working on it. They're not gonna fix that problem. But every single school district would rejoice if they said, you know what, we do circuit breaker for special ed for out-of-district placement. We're gonna help you, we're gonna do a similar circuit breaker for special ed transportation. That would impact everyone the same way, and it's money. It'd be money back to the districts. If they try to do another formula, there's a formula that's very popular right now to increase the foundation budget. Increasing the foundation budget does not necessarily help Kentucky. It does not help a lot of our local schools, because we're small rural schools. And all of a sudden, that budget might go up, but it's tied to circuit breaker. Our circuit breaker money we get back would drop. Now, if you are more urban school, big benefits. So they're trying to bounce out, and they all understand it's a big challenge, but there's not going to be one similar thing. Mr. Colley and I have a great conversations about, look, why don't you do this for the urban districts and do this for the rural districts? That would make a lot of sense. But I appreciate the fact that all the politicians, we, that represent our towns, are very willing to meet with us, talk with us, and let us share our ideas of how we might be creating, coming up with solutions. Whether or not they're heard or listened to is a different, that's their job. That's their job. They understand our struggles. So the second part, the interviews. When I was sitting down with all those different groups, what was common? Things. So, overall, what was going well? Had a lot of feedback that people really liked the curriculum pathways at the high school. They liked that kids had options, and it was something that didn't exist. And students were excited about that they had different choices, and parents were ecstatic about it. They felt like that was a very unique piece that we brought to the school district. At the elementary schools, the level of community involvement, that people are coming in and they're volunteering quite a bit, that was viewed as a strength. This was great. So, when we hear this right now, you read this right now, that's why I put parentheses, "page", because we'll read this now, teachers overcoming the facilities they're working in. So, now, because we talk about the building project so much, you would think I would talk about the middle of high school, which did come up quite a bit, but most of it pointed to page. And from time to time, we'd have a Donnie Hugh teacher might mention something about, Donnie got to do. But parents were very cognizant that it didn't matter what the situation was, what the teachers in, they were still keeping the level of rigor and critical involvement high level. In university, I cannot repeat this enough times, every single person that I spoke to was proud and happy to have some power at Kentucky, some connection, either living in the community, or being a student here, or being a teacher here. That makes me feel happy, because I've always felt that way about this district. So in the interviews, where do we need to get better? Lot of, lot of concerns about our protocols and procedures, at a district level, at a school level, that some things are being done, there have been requests for a certain thing to be done, and it might be done in one school, but not in another school. There's no consequences, so everyone's on, kind of doing their own thing. So kind of making consistency. Communication, does communication from home to, from home to school, from school to administration, administration, just making sure all those lines of communication are open. Curriculum. So curriculum was interesting, was initially one, because some people were really frustrated, and we heard this from a slew of parents. Mary Ann was with me quite a few times, she had this question asked, is my kid gonna be at a disadvantage when they get to 7th grade? I said, why would your kid be at a disadvantage if they get 7th grade? Well, my kid was in ID, they weren't in STE. So is my kid gonna have, be at disadvantage with math? So I had to look at the whole explanation. It's not, that's not how it works. And the STE parents would say the same thing. What my child is doing, so are they gonna be behind? And no one was gonna be behind. But they, there was a lot of concern about the curriculum, and whether it was being done effectively or not. And also, there was frustration from teachers, because this was done in October. Of course, Mr. Colley and I came into a situation where there was a revamp of the English and math curriculum. So at the elementary levels, you had a lot of concern about, I've been doing something different, and all of a sudden, this is what I'm being asked to do in a very specific way, and this ties into the communication piece as well, of how that was being done. That frustrated a lot of the teachers. School environment, school culture. Came up from students, the kids came up quite a bit from teachers. They felt like there was an opportunity for us to make and celebrate, we do a lot of celebrations, have kids be more involved, and create a culture where everyone's feeling excited and less stressed. And technology comes up quite a bit as well. So biggest challenges. And again, this is not from me. None of this is from me. This is all from what I got. Special education. The quality of special education that we provide was a challenge. The amount of funding and attention that gets spent on special education was used in that category as well. The building project came up an incredible number of times in the curriculum. Those are the big, three biggest challenges that those groups all identified. So on the surveys. Surveys, in your packet, you'll see the answers to all these questions. I don't know if you go to page number, if you go, so the survey questions start at the bottom of page 12. And the parents and teachers survey was pretty similar. But then there were some open-ended responses. So what I did here was I went ahead, and for the students, there's over 1,200 responses for the students. They were able to go on, and some wrote four sentences. Some wrote two words, but I wouldn't categorize them. So one improvement I would make to PRSD. So the students, the most popular one was to fix the facilities and create a new building. Second one was the curriculum. For that, what I got a lot of, sort of facilities, they viewed the bathrooms specifically came up a whole lot as dirty, and old, and dingy. But we know, we heard Mr. Hadd speak earlier, that, you know, they do a pretty good job of keeping up, and it just doesn't look, doesn't matter what we do here, it's not gonna look clean. The curriculum part, students talked about, they wanted to have more freedom, more choice in picking electives. They wanted to have more flexibility, and if that would change a class, what that change would look like. They also talked quite a bit about having opportunities to do things that were specific to them, which the high school has, but in the middle school and fifth and sixth grade, you don't have that nearly as much. Student-teacher interactions, this one kind of came, was a surprise to me. A student saying that they really wished their teachers had a better understanding of how they were feeling in the classroom. That they would typically not ask a teacher a question, because they would feel embarrassed, so they'd just let things go. So the teachers would just do checks more often. They felt like that would be a beneficial thing. And also, a lot of students responded, they would love to see their teachers at extracurricular events and activities, that they felt like when they showed up, that made them super excited. But those were those main themes there. Discipline. Students recognize discipline is one thing that they would improve at PRSD. That is, not something I would expect to see, but that's what the students feel is important. We know right now, we're working on new code of conduct, which we'll bring for you before next year. And I think a big part of that, we've spoken with principals, is, people don't always know what the protocols, what the rules are, what the consequences are. I will tell you from the student perspective, discipline, and this next one, school culture. Heard a lot about vaping, and students going places into bathrooms, go to the bathroom, and there's like two kids vaping in the bathroom. We know vaping's a problem nationwide, and I think I reported last night, that we've got an anonymous spot on all of our websites. And the principals, this Friday, with Mr. Colley, are gonna create videos that they're gonna send out to their parents and their students, talking about how to use that anonymous tip thing. So if a student goes to the bathroom, or sees something that shouldn't be getting done, they can just click on that quick thing, write in a whole piece, and it goes directly to administrator, and they all of a sudden have what we call reasonable suspicion, which means that student can be searched. Okay? But I think that's what we've prepared. But the school culture, in addition to that, they really liked the get-togethers in high school, in high school. It was Spirit Week, they liked Spirit Week, they liked the holiday events, they liked opportunities to come together and have whatever rally was that they're doing in the middle school, sorry, the elementary schools. I'm certainly in this elementary, because they did not identify themselves. They talked about assemblies and things like that they would go to, or something different from the classroom. Lunch, got the same number of votes, that's why I slashed lunch. Lot of requests to get us something tasting different than cardboard. And also, lunch, the amount of time they had for lunch, and the way that lunch classes are set. So for the teachers, curriculum was their biggest one. New building was the second support. This was one that came up quite a bit in the interviews as well. Teachers feeling like all this stuff's being required of them, they need additional support. And we've talked about this quite a bit before, that the ability for us to give support when more things are changing has become less and less and less, because we don't have people in place to provide that support. So they have no one to go to, and they feel very frustrated with that. Culture and communication is part of that support. It's also, the culture and communication, also talked quite a bit about, if I had, there's a situation going on, I want to be able to go talk to my administrator and get a response from my administrator. So they felt like sometimes they're being heard, but nothing was being done on the other side. And part of it was, something might have been happening, but it was never communicated back, that this is what was going on. When positions change, people weren't always familiar with what the roles of those positions were, what could be done with those positions, and who, when do I talk to that person? So that was a big part of the culture and communication. I think collaboration, teachers wanted this opportunity to work together with people in their building and in other buildings to collaborate. And the parents, their number one was the new high school, middle school building, that appears in all three. Consistent curriculum. They, again, I said this earlier about, there's fears about what's being taught in one building or one classroom compared to another classroom. They had concerns about math, science, and the electives. Sometimes the electives, they felt like there were too many. Other times, they felt like there were not enough. So, you can take that on, you would like. They felt like the communication relationship between the teachers and them, they'd like to see that improved, as well as the school and them. So when something goes on concerning my child, am I hearing from the teacher about that, or is it, when something finally reaches a point, that the teacher calls and says, look, this is the fifth time? And from the school, if you shifted something on me, why am I not being told about it? Or something, if my child's being spoke to by someone in your staff, why am I not being told about it? Special education was another improvement they talked about, and world languages. So strengths. This is the Desi targeted review. It's three slides on this. So let me just set, and again, this is an advantage I have for this. They send a group of experienced administrators, former teachers, superintendents, to Kentucky. They put them through all the school buildings, have them walk through classes, talking to teachers, looking at documentation that we have in place. So, February 12th, February 15th, they said, based on all that evidence, these were the strengths. That we, our district has a good vision for standards-based instruction. That there's a lot of opportunities to make, to personalize that education for students. And I think that's very well displayed here in high school. And we have a focus on social, emotional supports, wellness, and safety. Those were our strengths. Our challenges. So, if you don't have a copy of the report, I'm more than happy to get it to you. So under curriculum, that was the first thing they mentioned there. They mentioned that curriculum, our curriculum, in one grade in one school to another grade in another school, is not consistent. There's no alignment vertically or horizontally, and it wasn't always effective, and it wasn't delivered in a timely way. So there was no, I don't wanna say it was a free-for-all. There was a framework, but it wasn't always followed. And that was actually philosophical approach. It was autonomy to get through the curriculum. The department in bed didn't particularly care for that. Participation in PD, the numbers of participants in professional development are incredibly low. So research-based instruction. There were no expectations for research-based instructions from central office. I've said this before, this should not surprise anyone. It's not that they, we don't want, or any prior administration would not want a research-based instruction. It's just, if no one sat down with me and showed me how to do that, or if no one's come and given me ideas of how to make adjustments, or what can get better, or if I'm not, as a teacher, had time to work with my peers, and there's been no support, then that's not gonna change much. Inconsistent delivery of curriculum. So, you could have two math teachers, same grade level, and doing the same topic, and completely different delivery. There's no one at central office to deal with student achievement data. So again, as a teacher, this ties into no data discussions, or time to analyze stuff that negatively impacts teachers and teaching and learning. So those two are tied together, because that's basically saying, one, if we have data, what are we doing with? Two, do we even have the data? And then three, who is supposed to be dealing with that? The teachers have no time to take that and go ahead and break it down. The principals, as I've said more than once, have no, their job is supposed to be the principal educator in that building. They have no time to do that because of their other mandates that they're required to do. So there's no one that exists to go ahead and do that. We have Amy Funk, who's breaking down all the data for every single school in the district. She is not breaking down individual, common sector, that we don't have. She's not breaking down state data. These are all things that just have not been happening at the time. And then, like I said, there's limited assessments. There's no, there was no evidence that, of assessments that were taken by common assessments, to be finishing units, or tests that they come together and compare that. Academic support from the teacher's side, teachers identified that early on. Where's the support? And where's the support for the kids? We had this conversation a little bit earlier. If my child's struggling, and they're in 4th grade, what's their option to get extra help? I know on the schedule, we put win time in there, but the question is, what does win time actually look like? And limited instructional resources. So teachers, even if they're asked to teach something, where are they going to get that resources to deliver that curriculum? And again, these are things, before I even got to this point, I think Mr. Colley and I spoke early on in the school year about, these are, so they can come and see this, but I think everyone, if you walk around to all the schools, you guys can see this pretty clearly. So their recommendations is that, there's a curriculum renewal plan, where the curriculum ends up being aligned, and is consistently delivered district-wide. ends up being aligned, and is consistently delivered district-wide. The data literacy is there to help direct, so we teach people how to use data, you look at it, instruct them on how to use it, and ideally you have teachers who are really good at this, and they go and work with their peers. We just created that position, curriculum, it was a teacher, it's a stipend position, where teachers can apply, where they would look at data and help with their peers on how to alter their instruction based on data. Assistance to monitor classroom practices and instruction, there's nothing that exists. So walkthroughs, walkthroughs. And for me, walkthroughs are just a basic thing you do as a principal, or as an assistant principal. You walk through, you go see what's going on, sometimes you leave a good note, sometimes you don't leave anything, sometimes it's a quick feedback thing. There was not much to the place. I think one school was actually doing some piece, some walkthroughs, but not much. Basically, it was, I'm in my office, teachers are in the classroom, kids are in the classroom, everyone's doing their own thing, and there's not a lot of intermingling within a single building. So I think what Mr. Conway and I are expecting is that there's going to be a lot of intermingling, and we don't want all these different buildings being separate, there needs to be stuff going between all of them.
Can department chairs be brought into that corral?
So they are.
Okay.
And department chairs now, and I think historically, department chairs are used as evaluators to help support them. One of the discussions we've been having lately is that idea that we have veteran teachers, and we'd love for those veterans, those veteran teachers have always helped teach, grow, develop the first-year, second-year, third-year teachers, so they kind of understand, this is the Pennsyl way of doing things. And you want that, you want that to continue. I know here at the high school, Mr. Seymour has, teachers signed up for walkthroughs, I've mentioned this before, but teachers get to go around and look and see what's going on in different classrooms, and provide feedback. That's huge. I think I've said this early on, when I was teaching, 80% of what I taught, I had stolen from other teachers. And I was able to steal it because I looked at their data, they were doing a good job, I went and talked to them, but I also watched them teach. And I think if I afforded that opportunity, afforded the time to do that, it has a huge impact on how I grow the profession. And then using that to be able to identify student strengths and weaknesses. So this is what this actually culminates in, these four emerging trends, patterns, and themes. So these are the four areas that came up the most frequently, and I don't think after we'll discuss any of this, we should, these are us. So number one, school culture and communication. All groups identified that, it was highly rated as one area. And just to be clear, the idea is to develop a district-wide strategic plan for three to five years. So this is one theme, but based on all that feedback, it needs to appear on that strategic plan. The next one was curriculum, data, and support. Three, protocols and procedures. And four, building projects, the building projects and facilities. So these really, all of this data collection, this is what it comes down to, those four areas. So the next steps, my job now is from April all the way to August, to look at those four themes, talk to everyone, and try to figure out, okay, what does, what do we want for a goal? So if we're talking about protocols and procedures, what's our goal district-wide? And then, once you have goals for each of those four, each school, so mothership, and then all the subsidiaries down here, each school has their school council, each school has a school improvement plan that replicates those four goals, and those, and they're, and each school might look differently, but everything they develop, so their strategies and their theories of action, a theory of action is an if-then statement. And this theory of action is saying, we believe that if we allow additional time for teachers to examine data, then there will be a higher quality of curriculum delivery, and as a result, higher student performance. That's a theory of action. And then you get down to more details of what that looks like. So by August, we'll come back, or I'll come back, and have for you, here's a proposed district strategic plan for either the next three years, the next five years. Part of me wants to do just three years, does anybody want to take a guess why?
Because the project will be done in three years.
Yes, because the building project is going to greatly alter, I think, some of what, if it passes, it'll greatly alter kind of our strategy of what we're looking to accomplish for half of our school district. And then, once that finishes and is approved, then it gets disseminated down to all the schools, where they'll bring their school councils together, and then these, so, raise your hand if you worked in a school that has a strategic plan.
We have.
If you didn't, that's okay. But I will just tell you, my experience with strategic plans, it was something for us to do. The principal would sit down and do the entire thing and hand it in. One district I was in, we sat down, we wrote it down, we used kids, we created videos, and it was like a four-hour presentation for the school committee, and they would applaud at the end. And that was kind of an if. And that trend is gone now. These strategic plans, school improvement plans, every single time the school council meets, the question goes back to that school improvement plan. Okay, how are we doing on one? How are we doing on two? How are we doing on three? How are we doing on four? And there's data requirements, you fill in these gaps as you progress, and that gets viewed by everyone here. And so at the end of the year, we collect it as a school, we update our district's strategic plan to find out how we're progressing, and if we need to make alterations.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Are the minutes of the school councils for the month of January and February available from all five schools?
I do not know the answer to that. I can find out, but I'm, do you know the answer?
No, I don't know the answer, but I'd like to read them.
Yeah, I'll find it.
Generally speaking, they'd have minutes, I would doubt they'd be as detailed as our school committee meetings, for instance, in the minutes, so. I don't know how much you would ascertain for minutes from a site council.
Yeah, I know I've gone on and read one of the schools, or I went and talked to the principal, because it was three years old, the minutes were.
I don't know, the minutes that I experienced as an administrator, they were very detailed.
So what should be, what should be is, the document is one that gets posted, so everyone can, you can see that document with school improvement plan, wherever it is, and then there's dates, when things were reviewed, and what progress has been made, what progress has not been made. So even if there's not specific notes, you know that someone's been working on, the team's been working on. And, I don't know how, I'll find out how it works in Massachusetts, but it has to be signed off on by each member of that school improvement plan. So it's not just, the principal sits behind there and does it, everyone has to have a hand, and they're signing off, that they're going to be involved in this. And the people on the school improvement team, their responsibility is to make sure that their peers are also involved in it, and if the parent rep is out there getting, making sure other parents are aware of what's going on. Any other questions? And ladies and gentlemen, that was my February vacation. If there's no other questions, then I'll just end there.
You have my deepest sympathy.
That's good. Good break.
Thank you.
Mr. Conway, would you like to present the school calendar while Dr. Bartholomew is finishing up?
Nope, sure. Sure, I will. I believe all of you have received the most recent draft calendar for the 1920 school year. We've been working on this for, Mary Ann, about two months, I think, yeah? And this is being proposed to the committee for approval. I can tell you, in our process in this, we've reviewed a number of things. Number one, our sort of the desire around how we want to use professional development time, how we want to schedule our early release days, had a lot of dialogue with our Pennsyl Teachers Association around some of the components of this, reviewing contractual language. And we also sent some surveys out, we sent a survey out to staff, and we sent a survey out to parents around some particular aspects, not all aspects of the calendar, but trying to drill down some particulars. And in any given year, everything will change from one year to the next. We so happen, we're in a unique position where the Christmas holiday and New Year's fall on Wednesdays in this break. So it sort of presents some questions around what do we want to do with our calendar around those days. Additionally, how we wanted to use our four days, is there an election in November this year? You know, all things like that are things we sort of went through with this. So without sort of going through every component here.
That means they go on the 20th.
Yeah, and Thanksgiving is very late this year, if you notice, November 1st is on Friday, which pushes the 4th Thursday rather late in the month. What we proposed to do, and this is sort of combining the feedback both from staff and from student, staff would love to start, excuse me, staff and parents, staff would love to start as early as possible in August, and parents really don't want their kids to go back to school until after Labor Day, by collective sort of agreement in that. So we looked at the calendar and having two staff professional development days on the Wednesday and Thursday prior to Labor Day, so the 28th and 29th of August, we would have no school for students or staff on Friday, the 30th of August. Students would then return, start school on Tuesday, the 3rd, which is the Tuesday following Labor Day. That leaves us two other full-day professional development days that we would use during the year. Those would be scheduled in this proposed calendar on Tuesday, the 12th of November, and the other one on Tuesday, the 21st of January. You'll notice some similarities about when those days were chosen, they were chosen as Tuesdays after Monday holidays. It's a practice that some other local districts have done for the professional development days. We found this year, having four days at the beginning of the year was great for us this year, but then it also left us without a lot of opportunity to address various things with staff, and to build on things, and help answer questions this year, or not. So that sort of put us in that, and how we would position those. And we think that would be best for us from our professional development standpoint. We also added in monthly early release days, they are all three hours for professional development, as opposed to the staggered 90 minutes here or there, which sort of threw us off a little bit recently. And we did not address the parent-teacher conference scheduling, we left that the way it's been done the last couple of years, but that could be something that gets addressed in the future. Along with the early release days, does it make sense to have them on Fridays, and Fridays before long weekends or vacation weeks too? That could be something that we address potentially in future years, so.
So we have a motion.
Any comment, Dr. Bartholomew? Is there any entertaining questions from the school committee? Any comments?
No, I would just say that the calendar is very challenging, very, very challenging. So we have this dynamic where teachers want support in additional professional development, and we are crammed with only a finite amount of time to do that. And at the same time, during those four days, you want teachers to have time in their classrooms to get their classrooms prepared. So it really, it's interesting, it's trying to cram all that down. And we could take full advantage of all two days and say to teachers, hey, if you want to set up, do it beforehand, but that's, if they decide not to, they're putting the children at a disadvantage.
Emily, you have a question?
I have three questions.
Three.
So, my first question is about the orientation for pre-K and kindergarten, which is, it says on this calendar, first day for students, grades pre-K, K1 through 12, on the 3rd of Novem, September. And then it also says orientation, grades pre-K and K. That is something that's changed in a couple of different ways in the past four years, and I just want some clarification, because four years ago, pre-K and K had their orientation not a full, whatever, bulk, half, partial, whatever their regular first day of school would look like, on the first day of school. And then they actually started their regular first day on the second day of school.
On the second day, on the fourth, then.
So, and then that got unilaterally changed without a lot of consultation to the teachers, who then had some concerns about that. So I'm just asking for some clarification about what this means, because an orientation to me, and when my son was in kindergarten four years ago, was, we went in for like a couple of hours, and then like they got, you know, a few different groups of kids coming through, so they weren't all overwhelmed. So I want to understand what this intention is.
So this is presented as the same way it was on the calendar, so.
Right.
Without, I don't have any further explanation of what it was, so.
My second question is around the staff PD, I'm so thrilled that they're three hours, I think that that's much more valuable in terms of professional development. A lot of parents have some very valid, in my opinion, concerns about the lack of running of after-school program on the three-hour early releases. Again, because you guys weren't here, the history was, they used to be 90-minute early releases, the only day VASP didn't run was the two parent-teacher conference days at the middle school, like those, the parent conference days, because the middle school, high school kids weren't available to like help out. Then, since they got changed in the past couple of years to be some three hours, some 90 minutes, then VASP didn't run, and that has, is a problem for a lot of parents who rely on that care. So that's my second question, if these are all three-hour early releases, can we ensure the parents that VASP can run? I'm not expecting to necessarily have.
Yeah, I think it's something we'd have that conversation with our, with our at-school program, to sort of express the community's need for it. If it's a question of staffing, we'll have to work with them to sort of figure out how that would work.
Okay. And my last question is, why, why are we sending children to school for one day on the Monday before the Christmas holiday?
We aren't, that's.
Oh, that says, okay, so it's shaded.
Closed, yep. No, the last day in December would be the 20th.
Yeah.
Certainly in the lines in the middle where it identifies, we could change the way that's worded, if that's more helpful, to say that the 20th would be the final day of school before vacation, or some phrase like that would be more clear.
Yeah, just the shading is sort of, I mean, it can be hard to tell, but when I read that, I'm like, fly on earth, are we not closing until Monday?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hodges, you have a question?
Will the staff and parent survey give you some direction in terms of where you want to head with the professional development, or do you already have something in mind based on?
We already had, so this draft calendar is based on that feedback. We had 180 staff members, and we had nearly 500 parents who responded.
Okay, so.
And that's where, where feedback. Where we, the two main questions we dealt with is, when do you want to start? And what do you want to deal, how would you prefer to deal with the December vacation period? All taking into effect that every time you make a decision around that, it also impacts what happens in June. So as this calendar goes, we're actually a little bit later here than we've been, all the way to June 17th being the 180th day, 185th, 185 would be the 24th, which is awfully late.
Have staff and parents helped you to thematically prepare for whatever is going to happen in August for professional development?
Oh, for the actual professional development. Well, parents certainly have not, but that is the work that will begin, once we know what the schedule is, we'll begin preparing for both those two days, but we also anticipate offering some optional PD on the 26th and 27th, knowing that staff may generally be available, and may want to participate in some additional optional PD on those two days.
I'm good with that, thanks.
Mr. Bill?
Not specifically for this calendar, but I think down the road concerning parent conferences, the first round of parent conferences in the first semester, I think is important for targeting, say if a child needs support, or where is that particular student. I think what would be very valuable, if the calendar could permit it in the future, is to have a second round in the spring. I think that's a very key point of communication. I'm not saying, I don't think, there's no way to plug it in now, but I think down the road, it's something that really should be looked at.
Yeah, I think historically too, because we've always been seven periods all year.
Yeah.
We've only done one in the beginning, but now, in the high school and the middle school, there's semester courses, so if I meet with my first semester teacher, I don't always get to meet with my second semester. semester.
And I think it's, I'm thinking more of the core subjects, and even at elementary level, if you've presented a report, so to speak, the follow-up, I think, is as important a communication as the first semester's discussion. Good luck plugging that in.
Well, I anticipate next year sort of addressing that question of how do we want to deal with parent-teacher conferences?
Yeah.
In a broad sense, in that it's part of a bigger communicate, homeschool communication plan. Do we want them all in that cluster? Do we want them on early release days? Want to stagger them a little bit more? How do we want to do that? Districts do all kinds of variations of how that works. No one, I've never spoken to anyone go, we figured out how to do this and make everyone happy. I've never heard it from anyone, so.
Mr. Trotter?
I think that's a great idea, Bill, by the way. But I just wanted to go back to just the December vacation. In April, you have it listed for, you can do it that way for December.
To be consistent then.
Yeah.
So in April.
It says 4/20 through 4/24, April vacation. You could just write, you know, 12/23 through January 1st.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yep. Just write the dates, that it's closed.
And that's closed, yes.
Yes, okay.
So there's no people thinking we have to go to school on Monday.
Ms. O'Connor, you have a comment, question?
I have a question. Well, I guess it's a comment. I noticed on January 2nd and February 24th, it says school reopens, but then there's nothing in April for school reopening on April 27th.
Because there's not enough states.
Okay. So however we end up doing this with vacations, we'll just be consistent with it.
We've come full circle, we're back to you, Mr. Dwyer.
Joanna has her hand up.
So I had saved my comment about conferences because you said we're going to deal with it next year, but so I absolutely agree with Phil because I'd like to know a little bit more what the goals for parent conferences are because even with the two days in elementary, you get like 10 minutes with your child's teacher if you're lucky, which I don't personally, as either a teacher or a parent, feel is a super duper amount of time to get any questions answered if you're going to get any information from the future. And then this question of more than once a year, I'd love to address that.
Ms. Blanchard?
And then for the future, I still am comfortable that we continue to offer Good Friday as a holiday. I think we should either be doing all the major religious holidays or none of them. So just my opinion on that one.
Currently, it's a contractual obligation.
Yeah, I understand that.
Does that wrap it up? Any more questions, concerns? Okay, thank you. Now going to new business.
Excuse me, do we have a vote?
Oh, yes, we have to vote this. Excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion. We approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as presented?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to accept it as presented with a second. Is there any more discussion? No discussion, all those approved.
Is it as presented or as amended with the comments?
As amended with the comments.
Well, I think several people here would want to know the exact amendments. So if you could read them aloud so they are assured their input was taken.
My anticipation is nothing in the actual calendar itself will change, but in the middle column, both in December, April, and February breaks, that we use similar language so that it's clear what the actual days the school is closed is. That's what we'll, we'll do.
Mr. Dwyer?
We just get some kind of clarification, whether you're talking to kindergarten and preschool teachers or something around that orientation slash first day. I think that's confusing.
I can clarify, it is not something I inquired about. Again, simply just using the calendar that was already set.
100%. We just, we had this conversation last year, it got amended and then somewhat changed, but it's just confusing, so.
So what is the expectation or what do those days look like?
Is it their first day of school or is it an orientation?
Yep.
Like, so either change, get rid of the orientation or put the orientation is 9-3 and their first day is 9-4.
Yep.
9-4 is.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We had a second. We're in the middle of discussion. Any more discussion? We had a clarification, so let's have a vote. All those in favor, opposed, approved. This brings us to new business C, the gap program. Dr. Bartholomew, would you like to handle this one?
I would, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I brought with me an expert witness in Ms. Hackett, who's here. Ms. Hackett, if you could step up to the microphone. So I'll give you some background. We know that there's a history, when I was in school here, of the German-American Partnership Program was a very strong program. You had Herr Olsson and Frau Berger, both ran that, helped run that program. The idea was that you, there was an agreement between the United States government and the German government where students are exchanged between two different school districts. Sure, if you want to handle that, that's great. And part of that was during the school year, some students from Germany would come over here during the school year, and they would spend some time shadowing in classrooms. They'd go to Mr. Buell's classroom with a teacher, with another fellow student. But most of the time, they stayed with families and then they viewed some of the historic sites and things like that around New England. And in the summer, we would send students who wanted to participate would go over because they were still in school the summer, and they would go visit their schools and get an idea of their culture over there. We also had full-time exchange students. I know David Ecker and Marcus Roder were two students that I had the privilege of going to school with here. They spent the entire year here, but they were gap students who really liked it here, so they had stayed here. And we have seen, we all know and acknowledge that there's huge benefits to students experiencing other cultures. We also know that there's been, in the media, in the newspapers, and even here, we've seen that there's been problems with some of these programs. So what I've asked Ms. Hackett to do is just come tell the details about that. I believe, and we can have a conversation here, but it's just much more for information. We can talk about this at a later time. But one of the unique pieces about gap is in a lot of situations, if there were a group that wanted to have a, go to, I don't know, they wanted to go to Peru, to go to the rainforest of Peru. Okay, do that outside of Peru. Do that, go, do that outside of the Pennsyltucket Regional School District. Like, it's not, you can go ahead and do that, it's not going to be a sponsored event. You want to advertise, that's great, but this is not going to be a sponsored event. And if teachers want to do that and have a group of students, then they can go ahead and do that as long as everyone knows this is not a Pennsyltucket-sponsored event. Gap, there is no way to do that because it's the two governments that have come to this agreement. They defray the costs of all those traveling back and forth. And also, it has to have a tied-in specific district. Both districts have to sponsor that relationship. So that's what makes kind of the gap program unique. But I will turn it over to Frau Hackett.
So first of all, if you wanted to turn to the next page, you could see some of the guidelines for the program, the implementation. And so in the preamble, it states that the German-American Partnership Program is part of Germany's foreign cultural and education policy, is jointly administered by the Educational Exchange Service, PADD, of the standing Conference of Ministers of Education and Cultural Affairs of the States of the Federal Republic of Germany, the Georgia Institute, New York, and Gap and Company. So that is, that's why it's a partner school, and you do have to partner with the school. It can't be something that's done outside of the school. That's what it makes, it makes it a unique program. And so Herr Peterson couldn't be here tonight because his son broke his arm, fortunately. And also, we have a couple of other teachers who have gone on the Gap Exchange. Kristen Gillett used to teach there for a while. She used to be a member of the community. She is a big component of the Gap program. And then we have another teacher, a science teacher, I'm forgetting her name right now, Mrs. Stern in the middle school. She also wanted to get program, and they wanted to be here tonight. Unfortunately, they cannot be here, but they're all supporters of the Gap program. And so if you don't know what it is, as Dr. Buus says, it's an exchange program. Students, you know, about 10, 15 students go over to Germany. German students come here for about 10 days. They actually attend school. So that's one of the things that makes the program unique is that they attend a German school. They live with a German family. It's a much more unique experience, and you actually really get to experience the culture firsthand. You wake up with people, you have breakfast with them, you see how they wash their clothes, you know, you see everything about the culture. Whereas if you just go on a trip with one of the organizations like AEF, you're staying in a hotel, you know, you'll go to the tourist sites, but you're really not interacting with anybody from that country necessarily. I mean, maybe a few exchanges in the street, but this is a trip program where you do go with the family and you see how somebody else lives. So any questions? I'm not sure what information you guys, you would like to glean this information that we're sharing.
I'll tell you that my son went on the program and it was incredible. It is a very, I think it's one of the more unique programs outside of, say, a core curriculum. There are always going to be concerns, and there are certainly cultural differences that do come up, but that's part of growing up too. So I think it's a very good, as you know, it's a very strong program, and I think we're lucky to have it too.
Yes, it would be wonderful if we could take another trip and get this going again. And I just did want to speak to some procedures and guidelines. We would have to come up with procedures and guidelines in case something did happen on these trips, and we would all have to decide what steps would be taken. I am a chaperone on the Washington DC trips every year, and we have protocols. If, you know, a student is not following, you know, coming to the meet point on time, they have to stay with a chaperone for several hours or maybe even a day, and then they get to go back with part of the group. So I think we would, you know, really have to do a lot of talking and come up with guidelines of, you know, how we would want to discipline some things that, you know, could happen on the trip if we did decide to reinstitute this program.
It would be for next year, correct?
I think, I think we could get one going for next year, yes.
Awesome. Great.
So one of the, I'm sorry. So one of the pieces that often comes up as the big concerns are, okay, so if my child, one of my daughters was going and staying over in Germany, there's no background checks we can do on those families. Similarly, if my daughter misbehaves over there and does something or does something she's not supposed to do, they are still under Pennsyltucket's code of conduct. And in our discussions we had this summer with the Mass attorney, Mike Long, they've said some different sports teams going to camps somewhere else overnight, that's no-no. International trips, it's a gray area. If you do an international trip, make sure you have your paperwork. Everyone understands what they're signing up for, and they understand that if my daughter misbehaves, Frau Hackett might be on the other side of the phone calling me saying, hey, your daughter's coming home tomorrow morning. Pick her up at the airport because of her behavior, she was putting the group at risk or self at risk or any of, any of the above. So that's always one of the big issues that comes up. I've read about it recently in a local, one of our local districts had this problem where a student had been drinking at one of the homes and allegedly the family had encouraged it. Well, the teacher on there said that was a no-no, and they were sending the kid home early. The parent did not like that. They felt it was the visiting, the host family's fault, and they basically took the free will out of that student and said, well, the student didn't have free will. So they were going after the school district. I don't know how that's played out. I haven't read anything more about that, but I think if, as long as, so if something like this, our attorney has said, as long as you have specific protocols and procedures set up, everyone understands what's expected. And I think in the Washington DC trip, I know that Mr. Parent does an exceptionally good job of putting everyone on the same page and understanding what the code, what the consequences are if A, then B is going to happen, which is also what we need to have happen district-wide for discipline, by the way.
Policy J would include much of what we're talking about, but there's also an international travel. I'm wondering if we should take a closer look at that and possibly expand that, put in the protections that you're speaking about right now, so it protects kids and anyone else in the group.
Yeah, that would be great. I think it would be good to get to get them to speak about that earlier today.
Is this open to what group of students, like all students or Asian students? Am I being, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to.
Well, normally it's students who take German. But having said that, I would also like to get a cultural exchange going so that other students in other languages could also take some, take trips as well. Do you think that oral languages are a grant share?
Any more questions?
So I would think this is going to come up as later on, maybe when we start talking about Policy J, but it'll be another discussion. And what, Frau Hackett, if there's something that the school committee wants to endorse, then we would have to give her, is there a time where you need to start setting this up? I think, as I recall, it was something that happened in the spring, the German students coming over here.
I would have to look into it a little more, in a little more detail, but online it looks like it's fairly straightforward and, you know, we could probably get something set up for the fall of next year for other students from Germany to come over here, and then we would perhaps send our students sort of toward the end of the school year. I think that's how it was done in the past. The German students would come in the fall and our students would go sort of toward the end of the school year on land because the European schools go a bit longer into summer. So it kind of works out that way.
Emily?
It looks like the grant applications are due in the next six weeks or so, if that's part of what you're, that's the report. So if it's something, a grant piece that we're going to move forward with for next year, it seems like something we need to vote on. Because obviously, I assume, I mean, I'm sure it is straightforward, and I'm certain that you know what you're doing if you've done this before, but I wouldn't want to be like, oh, yeah, next week, by the way, you know, I mean, that seems overwhelming. So, I mean, I'm totally in favor regardless, but.
Yeah, Steven Peterson has done this, too. So, yeah, he's on board with this. We could get that done.
I would say, you know, subject to the creation of a set of policies and rules of conduct to start the process, but I think that having run a couple of these trips myself where literally the adults said, if it is legal to drink in that country, my child will drink in that country. And at that point, and that was said while we were over there, I think, subject to having a policy and a code of conduct with consequences ahead of time, I said we could give temporary approval now to whatever she needs to do, but subject to that.
Second, that's discussed.
I second that idea.
The key thing is.
I support that.
Yeah, so I would just, I would not feel comfortable allowing this to happen unless, because we, you've had experience in this, and we lay out this, so anyone, so if you want to look at that application, I think that's good, figure out how long it would take, and then we'll try to get together and present, because I want to try to come up with every possible, and even the ones you can anticipate, things that might happen so that any student who might participate in this, and any families who might be sending their children over, or who might be hosting, understand these are the rules that we're going to play by.
I want to remind the board that we're not here to entertain motions at this point, but this is our preliminary discussion of getting overviews of the program so everybody's enlightened, released from it, and we address it on the turn. Okay? Any more questions?
None.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. LeBret, new business. Mr. LeBret, new business D. Tell us the good news on the audit.
Thank you. As requirement of law, I am required to report the results of our fiscal year audit reports to the school committee when they become available. We have many audit reports that run through here, but three main ones that come through that are required, which are the end of the year report, which is basically a review of the numbers we submit to the state for inclusion on the DESE website, a group and audit of our federal grants programs, and the general audit of the balance sheet of the Poughkeepsie Regional School District. All three of them were completed almost simultaneously, the reports came in, so we can do them all at once now. The easiest one obviously is the end of the year report audit. That's basically what we submit to the state, as I said, for the DESE website numbers. They look for, make sure that our reporting is accurate. No instances of non-compliance were noted, so we were fine with that one. The second one, and this is more important because this will tell you whether the feds will keep giving you money or not, was our review, and these are mainly the special ed grants. They followed us. No findings, no question cost, and no summary schedule of prior audit findings because we didn't have any findings last year. The other one is the big one. This is our general audit, that reviews all the district programs, our receipts, our expenses, our procedures, our policies over the financial aspect of the district. I'm proud to say for the third year in a row, we have no management letter, so that means I have nothing to fix according to the auditors, but there's always something to try to fix. And the key highlights of, once again, we did not spend all our money and we didn't get ourselves in any trouble. And a new factor in this one is that now that we started putting money into the other post-employee benefit fund, when we adjusted our E and D policy, because I said this was coming to you guys, it showed up. So according to the auditors, we have a net position of a loss of $62 million right now, our district balance sheet, of which 74 million of that is other post-employee benefit potential cost to the district. So basically without that fund, they're saying the district's worth about $12 million, our assets, our buildings, our grounds, and our cash in the bank. So that's a new number, it's going to, I mean, we are putting money towards it, so hopefully we'll get rid of it in about 400 years. It's, it's a number that they created for Gatsby. It's, really doesn't mean much. It's always kind of been a pay-as-you-go system, but they've also recognized that there is the potential, you know, if a district for some reason went out of business, those retirement benefits have to be made up, then it would fall to our town. So we are funding it now, so at least it looks like we're making an effort at it, but it's kind of a fictitious number, but this was the new year it showed up. But other than that, those are our three audit reports. They are done, they're complete, and we have no additional work to do according to our auditors.
Dr. Bartholomew?
So, Mr. LeBret, just for clarification, do you have an idea of how other districts are in that same situation? Are they in also 400 years away from...
Yes, although we're making more significant progress towards it. In the first year, we put $300,000 towards it in the budget that we'll be presenting to the towns. This year we'll be putting another $300,000 towards it. Most districts are putting what they can find, 10,000, 20,000 a year at it, so they may be 800 years out.
And is it fair for me to say that that is, the audit report that we had is an exceptionally good audit report?
It's an exceptionally good audit report.
So I just wanted to make those two points. One, to not give the impression that, oh my goodness, we have, it's going to take forever to make this up, because relative to other school districts, and I think I mentioned this in terms of looking for overrides, that other places are having to do that, we are not. Fiscally, we are in pretty good shape and have been managing the money very, very well, which I know has not always been the case historically in this district. So I just wanted to emphasize a point and publicly thank Mr. LeBret for the work he and his staff have been doing.
And I'd like to certainly point out the staff. I have a very strong staff that I can trust explicitly and they take their jobs very, very seriously. Also, we have very strong procedures and policies. The things you see that happened in the papers recently to staff, they'll put in, these things will not happen here. There's no way it can happen here.
Ms. Blanchard, do you have a question?
So the money that you have to put into that account?
The OPEP.
Yeah, are we allowed to earn interest on that money and use it for other parts of our budget?
No.
You have to, you can earn interest on it and use it for the OPEP account?
Actually, the state has now come up with a new thing where they'll allow you to take that money that we set aside and send to them in the PRIM Board, the Investment Management Board that handles the state pension system, will lump your money with that and invest it for you.
Okay.
I'll be looking at that and bringing it to you right now. When we passed our investment policy, that wasn't part of it. It did allow for it, but with the first payment and it didn't seem worth it to bring forward, what we did now is it's earning interest in its own separate account, kind of like a stabilization account, but that's at bank rate.
But it stays within the, the interest income stays within the OPEP account?
Within the fund. But I'd like to do a little bit better than, you know, 1% in the bank right now, if I can get 10% at the PRIM Board and let them professionally manage it for us for no cost. So once we get, maybe after we make our next payment sometime cash flow wise around August, I'll come back to you guys and see if, how you feel about transferring that money to the state treasury and let them invest it for us.
Mr. Hodges, question for Mr. LeBret.
Line 98.
You're, you're in G.
We're not there yet.
That's section, that's my, that's G.
I'll wait, thanks.
Oh, also, they sent us an inordinate amount of copies of these things. If anybody would like a copy of these, they sent me about 70 copies of each one of these reports. So if anybody would like one, let me know and I'll be happy to bring one for you.
Will you autograph it?
Sure. I have a stamp.
Is that it for questions? Well, thank you, Mr. LeBret, and I concur with Dr. Bartholomew with your expertise at being the manager of the business for our school district.
Thank you.
Well done.
This brings us to the educational stability program review. Mr. Conway?
Sure, I'll be brief. We, you were notified earlier in the year, we are in the process of our self-study of what's now called a tiered focus monitoring review. Both Dr. Jarvis and myself have spent several wonderful hours together preparing for our submission of artifacts and demonstration of meeting various components that would be, typically might be reflected in a, what was known as a CPR coordinated program review, which is every six, seven years within a district. So now they break it out a little bit and they give you some components. We have special ed components, we have civil rights components that we need to fulfill. It's quite a bit of work to put it all together, so we're in the process of doing that. And we also received notification that in addition to that, we also are, must take part in our educational stability program review. So it's tied to it, but it's done a little bit differently with some slightly different timelines. Why they don't do it all together, they could not provide a clear explanation for that. However, this is not anywhere near as much work, but in preliminary review and in part of a webinar, the main issue that seems to be coming up, that we're going to need the committee's attention to, is regarding policy updates. Did, in our policy subcommittee meeting earlier, did mention some of this to them, providing that subcommittee, so we'll put some of the work through the subcommittee first before it comes here. I tell the committee about this because we might need to move on a more rapid pace to get some of these done outside of the sequence we had established previously to review certain policies, so that we can make sure we submit this on time. In particular, educational stability is sort of the overall umbrella term for issues related to foster care, as we learned with our students from Ameramec today. I almost said this morning, so it feels like you. It's just homeless students and the McKinney-Vento Act, which we actually, as a district, we do have a good policy around that, yet it's, it's a little dated. ESU, Every Student Succeeds Act has some new changes, so that must be updated. I'll provide the committee with that information. And military families. So we actually need to have three separate policies around those and how they relate to other policies that we have. So the language, you can't just fix one, it connects to others, our enrollment policy, admissions policy, things like that, all need to be reflected in that. The other component that comes up around civil rights, we have, in various places throughout our policies, we have statements around nondiscrimination. And we include in nondiscrimination, all of the various categories of people, how they may be discriminated against. The vast majority of those are dictated by federal law, a few by state law, but in particular, only in once, we need to update all of those to make sure we include the term gender identity. It is reflected in one, but not all. So we need to make sure it's reflected in all of those locations. So I'll be providing the policy subcommittee meeting those as we go. Some of them may come to the committee a little out of order, but we'll, we'll need to proceed with those to, so that we're compliant.
Any comments, questions? Right. This brings us to new business F. Mr. Hodges, what do you got for us?
Well, we've been working on, as a subcommittee, we've been working on Policy C. The state requires 12, it's like 12 chapters in a book. I've done nine of the rough drafts. We are moving, our subcommittee has approved new language for Policy C. I had mentioned a year ago that as I looked at our policy, I found that there was a lot of absent meat on the bones and I have found that in some cases, there's no bones at all. So what I have done is I have looked at probably a dozen different schools and have copy-pasted up-to-date language, usually language that is 2016 or 2018. So we have approved that. Now, I think I went beyond a protocol because right after we approved that, I sent that out to the rest of the people with this in mind. We meet at 5:45, just before every meeting. No one in any of the three towns, and I don't know what their interest level is, but I know that no one attended any of those meetings. So since we had approved as a subcommittee, I, I think in error, had sent them out to everyone with the red, the red print meant this is language we did not have or that we stole it from someone else. And I usually put at the very bottom that that was from Newbury Court because we share the same lawyer, and Duxbury, there was Acton, Boxborough, there was Masco, there were a number of schools. But I also ran into the fact that I believe in order for me to send it out to all nine people, that needs to be on a docket for the school committee. So I will make sure that, I will say that that kind of protocol though, is why we are 10 to 12 years behind most schools. So I'm trying to do everything I can and so is my subcommittee. They're very thoughtful inside of people, it's easy to develop consensus with this group. But I'll tell you, it's a snail's pace based on this protocol because what I wanted to do was to get that in front of you and I had three people from the committee that gave me feedback that was very, very helpful, so that when we come to a situation where we're going to vote, we can actually do it like on a tonight. If we go back to the other protocol, then all I can do is hand that to you tonight and then we got to wait another two weeks and it'll probably be five years before, maybe six, before we can get to all 12. So we're, I'm looking, what I'm going to attempt to do to kind of get around this is to make sure that before I send this out, that Mary Ann has this as a docket for the next meeting, then I can fire that off to the rest of the committee. Otherwise, our subcommittee can communicate at any time at all. So I'm assuming that everyone has seen Policy C and I don't know whether you have any additions, subtractions, amendments, or what have you, but I would make a motion that we approve Policy C as written.
I have a motion on the floor. I hear a second, and a second. Now, there's discussion on the motion. Emily?
I just have a question. So the places where you referenced the other districts from where the extra language, language came from, are we keeping that in there too?
No, no. All of that, the final copy, when I turn that over to Mary Ann, all of that will disappear. That, that will become our language. So if it says Newbury Court, and I also will probably not do, I have previous adoption and then current adoption, it'll be a little more simplistic than that, it'll just be adoption and the date.
Mr. Buell?
I just would like to comment that I think that what Mr. Hodges has done by sending it to us ahead of time, gives us a chance prior to a meeting to read it, make notes, because it's a fairly complicated subject. So there's no money being voted on and there certainly is no vote taken via the internet. I've always interpreted that communication as an FYI, just as a point of reference.
I actually agree. It was pointed out differently to us, but...
I think it's an FYI, yeah.
It may be something to look into that could change in the future, I don't know. We didn't talk to our legal people, but no blood, no file, Mr. Hodges, and we really appreciate that thought. We were able to comment, so it's been in everybody's lap, so...
I thought we were allowed to, you know, address the whole, you know, email, as long as people aren't emailing back and forth, if it's just one.
Yeah.
I thought that was...
That's clouded. This is a policy that's been sent to everyone, that the public doesn't know that we're discussing changes in policy, et cetera. It was pointed out to us by a board member. It immediately persisted until we talked to the lawyers on it. I agree with you two. I think it's a very good way to get it out there so everybody can comment on it ahead of the time, so when we get here, not an awful lot of time is wasted. So at this point in time, it's in limbo. Emily?
I was just gonna say, I don't think we can comment on it ahead of time, but I think we can get it ahead of time.
Yes.
Because that's for a piece around open meeting law where you can't, I, you know, forum blah blah, you can send something to someone, but as soon as it becomes a conversation, it mounts more than that piece of the body.
Dr. Bartholomew, you have a comment?
Sure, I was just going to make, make mention of, this came up at a meeting I was at for Mars, it's the Massachusetts Association of Regional Superintendents, and one of the presenters was talking about any communications that I would have with all of you. So today, for example, I sent you a remind message that COPCINQ went off here at the high school, fossil law, that any communication like that is supposed to be presented at the next school committee. So I asked that question, I said, you've got to be kidding me, how often does that happen? And they said, next to never. So, well, that makes sense, because if we did all the communications, unless we're conducting business back and forth, that should not be an issue. We're not trying to influence each other, we're not trying to, like, stop myself going out there saying, guys, I really need you, when we sit down to make sure you vote this way or be, ask, ask me this question. It's much more just for your information. So, and I don't even know, I think from my attorneys, I'm curious to see what they, where they found this, because I think what Mr. Hodges had done, done was to, exactly what Mr. Buell said, get us this information, it's a lot of information. And if we were to just get it here tonight, that's a short amount of time to look at it. And even if it's posted on the packet on Friday, it's the weekend, it'll be on Tuesday to go through policies is a challenge.
Joanna?
So couldn't we have Dick as the chair of the policy subcommittee, send it to Mary Ann as part of the packet, you know, two weeks ahead of time, even though it's not in the official packet? You know, then it's posted on the website and then we can all access it from there? Just have it posted as part of the packet for the upcoming business meeting on?
Yeah, we'll find out the legal part. I think that's a, I think it's a great idea. Because once, once, of course, in the subcommittee, once we're done with a section of policies, being able to get it out to everybody and get feedback immediately and then being able to post it, even if it's a week later, where Mary Ann posts it up for the next meeting, at least it's out there for the public, they all see.
Yeah.
What's not happened, I want to make clear since this is on video, what's not happened is all of us have not been going back and forth saying, yes, we want to make these changes. Once that happens, we have to divulge that out to the...
Wait till you see the policy that has 91 pages.
Yes.
Okay, we have a policy motion on the floor, it'll be accepted by Dick Hodges and who... It'd be accepted by Dick Hodges, and it was seconded. We're in the middle of discussion. Does anyone else want to add to the discussion?
Move the motion.
If not, let's move the motion and vote. All those approved. Disapproved. Ms. O'Connor, do you have a vote?
Yeah, I first.
Okay. Thank you. So, thank you very much, Mr. Hodges. And I got a, once again, I did it last time, I'll do it again. Marie, Joanna, and Lisa, you guys are doing unbelievable amount of work on this. It is no easy task. It's like having a second job and not getting paid for. So really appreciate it. But I got bad news for all of you. Mr. Conway just told us, for all the work you've done, speed it up, you're still too slow.
And he's right.
All right. This brings us to the budget update. Mr. Lebrant, you're on.
Thank you. I passed out a little synopsis, kind of showing some of our thoughts that we've had since the budget book was given to you in late, mid-January. As we all know, by everybody's standards, there's going to be a rather large override on all three towns' ballots for a new middle high school. To that end, obviously, it's not as long, as well as some changes to the regional agreement. To that end, it's always our goal not to try to push our member communities into a billing situation that they find untenable. Also, as we mentioned earlier on in the budget, our special education costs are, and the superintendent alluded to, just extraordinary going forward. It's almost like a runaway train we're trying to corral. So trying to balance the statement of not asking too much from our member communities, as well as still being able to meet the needs of our students, we've got discussions going forward with, you know, vice principals at the elementary school, some various assistant principals, and changes to how the specials at the elementary school will be staffed. All those things were already discussed. I don't know where you're going to fall with them, but they've been discussed. On top of that, those things were all included in the original budget book you got. On top of that, when you did it, the assessments to the towns, based on this budget book, were, in my opinion, untenable. So we came through, I tried to do a simple type of assessment to see what we could do. We've talked to the finance directors in all three towns. I've heard back from two of them. And we've came to kind of, I've kind of come to a consensus idea in my head that we needed to reduce this book by about $294,000. After the governor's budget came out, we were waiting on, it made some change. Obviously, those things just happen. Those are adjustments we have to make for school choice, charter school, how much we're going to get for Chapter 70 revenue. These are all changes in the book. You can see how they kind of play out, revenue increases, expense decreases, those type of things, we're trying to balance them out. So some of my thoughts are to achieve that $294,516. And let me also add, going forward, that the two towns I did hear from, which were Merrimack, where we were at last night, and West Newbury, seem to be okay with this. Grohl and I haven't heard back from yet, and they have a fairly significant adjustment over what we were originally telling them, once the two-step methodology is applied to our assessment. It's fairly large. I'm not sure how they'll react to it. But for now, we'll hopefully try to stay with this. We had a revenue change for E and D of $59,227, from my estimate. That was, again, I was guessing before. We now have that number. It's been approved by the state. That's simply nothing more than an offset, and the expense decreased about halfway down on the right. Basically, what I would do, I said, in the budget book, and I said, "We put $300,000 in DoEPEB." The budget book cover release says 350, so we just adjust that down to 300. And then I adjust down the amount we put into our stabilization account by 92. That's just a balancing number, so to speak, but it matters. We're not getting as much Chapter 70 or Regional Transportation Aid as we had thought, so those will become decreases. And based upon the assessment of the $294,000 change down, it would change the estimates from the budget book to Grohl and needing another $69,425, Merrimack needing another $28,996, and West Newbury would go down $16,153. To balance the change, we have some changes. The expense increases, the school choice expense, that's from the governor's budget I don't quite understand that one, because it basically goes flies on the fact of what the superintendent just showed us, that we have less kids wanting to choice out of our school. But according to the state, they're going to, we're going to lose $93,376 for that in the cherry sheet. Also, even though we have no reduction in kids going to charter schools, our expense decrease will be $73,000. That's basically because the state is throwing more money at charter schools. So now we don't have to pay quite as much. Luckily, it kind of balances those two out. Then I'll just run through the other lines, basically, that had nothing to do with the governor's budget. We have three retiring sped teachers. I'm going to propose not replacing one of them. I've talked to Dr. Jarvis about this, and this, he feels that this is a doable thing, the way things are going to kind of slide with the programatics. Contracted services for sped therapists. I'm going to roll the dice on that one. I know it doesn't sound good. We budgeted $75,000. We have a student who is severely in need, and if he comes to school, he has to have a private nurse. Last year, we budgeted for this nurse. The child didn't come to school one day. I don't foresee that changing, so I'm willing to roll the dice and pull that out of the budget line. Should it, should it happen, we'll deal with it. But I don't foresee it happening. A reduction in sped transportation costs by $75,000. I was up feeling significantly in the budget book. There's a couple ways where we've found some cost savings as other children, since we did this, from other districts will now be joint, sitting on buses with our kids, so we can kind of split the costs. And a child on a transportation run can be as much as $40,000 to $50,000 by that one child. So if you can team up with a couple people, you save quite a bit of money. It seems like it's kind of a hard roll of the dice, because, you know, these children kind of come and go. But we do have a stabilization account that we established too, so should the need arise, we have additional funding source that could be available to us. So I feel safe in doing this as an adjustment, right at this particular point. The two health insurance lines, 355 and 358, the GIC will be coming out with their rates, hopefully Thursday of this week. So we really don't know, but we did, as I alluded to earlier, the average was going to be 3.3% of there as a policy change, as a premium change. In the budget book, we did 5%. So I just basically averaged out, took out the 1.7% on both the retiree and the employee. Now, it could change. That's an average. Sometimes they'll say, you know, that's the average, but the retirees could go down 1% and maybe the Fallon plan could go up 7% when they get their average, and we have nobody on Fallon, and we have tons of retirees, so it could get better. But it also could get a little worse. But either way, I think this is a safe assumption to play with for our numbers right now. And the last one that isn't related to the governor's budget was line 374, which is a tuition for private school. We had a student we thought was going to come back, and now he's going to stay out. So I wanted to make sure that that was reflected, and at least as a starting point for special ed, to try to keep it as close as possible. When you net all these things out, obviously, it gets me down to the $294,000 that, 51622, to reduce the budget book that was originally presented to you, to get to the assessments that you see attached to this. You'll notice, as you go through them, on the third page of it, there's a little bit of blue there. It'll show you the fiscal year 19 and 20 assessments between our member communities, with the difference of how much they would be going up year over year. The increase to Grohl and obviously being $341,825, Merrimack $260,204, and West Newbury The page that follows that will show, give a little bit of a history of what we've been doing, but more importantly, showing you the, although the dollar amount remains the same, the percentage increase to each town. So Grohl would be roughly 3.6 increase, Merrimack 3.2, and West Newbury about 2.4. So that's where this would get us. The reason we're bringing this to you tonight is to give you a little bit of time to think about it, because we are scheduled to vote next Tuesday on March 5th, the final budget number, which we will have to send to our member communities. I'm hoping in between now and then, I'll hear some feedback from Grohl and, so I can at least tell you what we're looking at, whether it's going to charge an override to that particular point town or not. The other two towns, I feel, won't, based upon the comments I've heard from them. So that's, I'm waiting to hear from the third. But that's what we're looking at right now, and what we're kind of bringing forward to let you think about.
Now's a very good time to ask questions, since we will be voting on this budget next time, as just stated. So if you've got them now, it's a very good time. Mr. Hodges?
Lisa was first.
Okay, Lisa.
I got a laundry list of questions.
Sure.
Okay, these all revolve around special education. And it isn't just me that's asking them, it's also stakeholders that have brought these to my attention.
Sure.
So I just want to clarify everything in public session. First question is, how many sped staff positions are being eliminated and cut in each of our six schools?
Just the one that you saw in the special ed teacher you see right here.
Okay.
You might see a lot of difference in variation. Like I said, we had a lot of retirements in that area. Obviously, if you have a special ed teacher making $87,000 a year, and they're retiring, you replace them with one making $53,000 a year, it'll look like in the budget that the numbers, you know, the salaries have gone down, like a position's being lost. It's not. It's just, you're replacing higher-end staff, newer staff coming in.
So which school is that one got being made at?
It's a district-wide position. It's part of the programmatic things at the secondary school that Mr. Jarvis feels is, some people have gone out of the district, they might not need a secondary type of a program. It's not a program that's been listed, they just don't need to run two sections of it. So right now--
It's not a school, it's a district-wide.
So if it's a district-wide program, is it like a behavioral one? Is it a language-based one? Which program is it?
I believe he was indicating it was going to be more towards the, a social-emotional side.
Um--
But again, that could, that can change too, very quickly.
So that could be shifted from other positions.
So I think we all understand that when it comes to special education, things can shift very quickly, depending on people who move in or move out.
Again, we're still dealing with lots of population movement that gets up to the secondary level. There's going to be some pretty good reductions in student populations moving through our secondary schools in the next few years.
Now, I did ask Dr. Jarvis, what were the current numbers of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in special education?
Yep. So-- Go ahead. I got them.
Okay.
So sixth grade, there's 54 students. Seventh grade, 48. And eighth grade, 42.
Okay. So when the sixth grade is going to the seventh grade, there's going to be an increase of six students. And then when the seventh grade is going to the eighth grade, there's going to be an increase of six students. So that's going to be there. So when you look at the line items in the budget, the ones that I'm questioning that relate to special education are all decreases.
Sure.
And costs. So line 98, which I noticed that you called out in your packet, that number's changed.
Yep.
So essentially, it went from $167,000 down to $53,000?
You're asking, in current, there was a reduction of $167,000 in the original budget.
Right.
That, what you'd be doing now is changing, and you'd be adding another $53,000 to that. So it would go to 212,000? 220,000? So there'd be a reduction there at that number.
So it's almost like 111--
Again, but again, I'm cautioning you, just because they're negative numbers and dollars, it doesn't mean they're negative numbers in bodies.
Okay. Because, again, people are retiring, and you're rehiring--
Right. We have a lot, we have a lot of specialists and special ed teachers leaving the system this year. Usually, we have more on the classroom teacher side of it. So it's, you know, as the student population's a decrease in going forward, we just don't replace them as they go in, so you'll see the reduction that way. This time here, the most of the retirees are in the specialist, in the special ed program.
So I believe we have eight retirees who have declared--
Yeah.
Of the eight, four of them are special education retired.
Okay. And just what isn't being replaced? So line item 99, is the Bagnell sped teacher, decrease of $123,000?
No, it doesn't, again, no, it doesn't necessarily mean that. It could mean that a person, they're still having six special education teachers. Nothing's really changed there, but I believe two of the, two of the retirees, I believe, are at Bagnell.
Okay.
So that'll be a slight reduction. Also, it's kind of hard to look at, the way we used to look at it, in the two-and-a-half method, because the teacher's contract doesn't work that way anymore. There are accelerated levels, and there are decreasing levels. So it could, it could magnify. If you have a lot of experienced teachers, you're not going to see a lot of big increase in salary towards the two-and-a-half, because the contract doesn't work that way anymore.
So just to clarify, there's six special ed teachers at Bagnell, there will be--
Six now.
It's a space.
There'll be one per, there's one per grade now, there'll be one per grade next year.
And then line item 102 is the Sweetsa sped teacher, decrease of $4,600? Is that something similar?
Um, yes.
Okay. Line item 103, middle school sped teacher, decrease of $46, 699?
Yep.
Line item 124 is a sped department head, decrease of $8,163?
I'm sorry, what line was that again?
124, on page three.
Yeah, that's, it's not a deduction. That's kind of always an ongoing battle, when you see the department heads, how Kate treats them in payroll, and how I treat them in budget. I have them more heavily on the, she kind of treats them, we usually try to treat them as a 0.4 towards the department head, and a 0.6 towards their salary. But sometimes, when she does it, because of the way the tax things line up, it doesn't quite line up exactly. But no, none of them, the department heads remain, their raises remain, there's no change there.
And the rest of them are all paras across the district. So I'm just going to lump them all together, just, I'm not going to lump them together, I'm just going to call on each line item. 143, middle school para, decrease of $19,000. Line item 145, Bagnell para, decrease of $42,000. Line item 146, Sweetsa para, decrease of $23,000. 149, another Bagnell para, decrease of $29,000. 152, page para, decrease of $9,400. Line item 153, another Sweetsa para, decrease of $35,000.
Yep.
And then 155, high school para, decrease of $111,000.
Yeah, that's just the way I'm counting it. What you need to look at for the paras is line 147. And you'll see an increase of $310,000 for district-wide.
Okay.
The reason, so that was most of the offset of all those things. That's me moving money out of the sped IDA grant. We were having a little problem arguing with the state about when things were actually available. So what I'm doing now is, the IDA grant is now paying solely for sped transportation. It's just easier, right? Because the federal grant system runs, doesn't run the same as our year or the state fiscal year. So they're trying to keep the costs, so I'm trying to basically run $600,000 in something in a small seven-month window. And the only thing that really works that's eligible for this grant is transportation. So what I've taken now is a whole bunch of paras that used to be in part of that grant with the transportation, dump them back into the budget, why you see all the negatives year over year. And then now I'm dumping that all to transportation. But there's no reduction in paras. As a matter of fact, we have, I think, 11 more paras on staff than we did three years ago right now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hodges?
Just wanted to follow up on line 98. I want to put my teacher hat on and ask this question. You have one retiring teacher that you're not replacing. Now, that one retiring teacher this year has X number of students. Who's picking up next year this person's X number of students?
It's a district-wide program. So it's going to be basically children that are moving from the elementary school section into the upper levels now.
Okay.
So now they can be kind of consolidated, so we don't need that extra teacher. Where we used to have them split over three schools, now they're all going to be in one school.
And would that be the same for someone who is a special ed? And would that be the same for someone who is a special ed in the middle school, who's going to the high school, and we would need to?
Well, no, going to the middle of the high school, it's still the three towns combined. Once they get out of the elementary schools and come here, where you might have had to have special ed teachers at Bagnell because they had three kids or something, now you can kind of put them in class with six when they kind of combine themselves.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more?
Joanna.
Joanna.
So you had said at the beginning that you felt like, I think this two hundred and ninety-four thousand was the part that you would still like to reduce?
I would basically like to make these particular changes to what you've been presented in the budget. Just touch these line items to make that adjustment to those in the budget.
Okay, so with those adjustments that you make, that's where you get to this page with the blue numbers on it right there?
Right, that becomes, this would become the assessment for the town, how it's calculated?
Yep.
That would be the increase year over year, and the next page is the percentage increase year over year.
Okay, so our overall budget is going up three point one percent this year?
If you, if we voted the budget book, it would be, as it was, it would be three point oh-nine percent. If you make these changes, it would be two point three five percent. And as you, as you heard the superintendent allude to, that's far less than the communities around us.
So when we vote, we're voting on the budget with these changes?
If that is your purview, yes. So what I'd basically be asking you to do is vote the budget of forty million, seven thirty, six eight seventy-four. But again, you have a week to digest it, think about it. I'll hopefully hear some feedback from Grohl in the meantime, and so I can honestly tell you what would occur if we did vote this, whether it would be an override there or not.
Again, selfishly taking the floor, I would like to commend you on this hair splitting because it's a very difficult thing to do and you're doing it very well.
Actually, this district is really good at it. We have a lot, everybody works together.
I have one amended comment to that. For the next meeting, could we have heat in this room?
I don't know why, my goodness.
Well, this brings us to public group, another comment.
One comment, just in terms of the budget, this is a conversation Mr. LeBrec and I had earlier, but I know there was comments or questions about the public transportation, looking at transportation, and that is something we can still do, whether this, even after this is approved, we can have that conversation about what the impact is if we're moving one, two, three, four buses, what the benefit is to the school, what the time difference would be to the kids. We're waiting to hear back from Salkor on what that would be, and when we get that, we can share that information with you, and that's kind of a conversation and decision that you all would have to, have to make.
So a few people have been waiting patiently so for public comment part B. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to come on up to the mic? I believe it is on. And identify itself in any capacity within the district.
Good evening, my name is Marcino Vito, I am the department chair for the fine performing arts of the state. And I'd just like to speak about some of the changes and impacts that I'm concerned about for next year. So first, I know it's late, I apologize for this, but if, have you ever observed the difference between the color of the sky and the ball versus the spring? There's a vivid difference. Have you ever stood behind home plate looking down the first baseline and noticed the difference of the distance between home plate and first plate is probably about a fifth of the distance between first base and second base, first base and second base? And if you're sitting down, it probably goes to about an eighth of the distance. Have you ever had an emotion that was so strong that words were not adequate to express it? And I'm going to ask you to consider that one plus one equals one. If you have one droplet of water, one droplet of water plus, you put them together, one plus one can equal one.
Watch your throat.
These are the type of challenges and thinking that the arts bring to our students. And our students, they're just examples. They're challenged and they're inspired by this type of thinking every day on their path to discovering who they are, finding their voice, and beginning to create a future of their choice. The typical art student, they're not a typical art student. They come from all walks of lives, life, they have different experiences, and they bring different perspectives. The power of the creative process is the thing that challenges them to think uniquely. And just a few examples. I've been teaching at Penn Tucket for twenty-two years. I see that academically strong student is so driven to obtain their As, B pluses, the B pluses just, it's about the A. In the arts, we encourage them to take risks, to celebrate a failure, that in that failure is the power to really learn, that they realize, they begin to realize it's not about the A. If you're working towards the A, there's something you're missing, the fun, the excitement, something to push you further, to find your own way. And it's the teachers here that guide them in the fine performing arts. The student that struggles with a myriad of social or emotional issues, every teen deals with this. Some to a higher level, a higher degree than others, but they all, we as people deal with that. The arts help them, help them develop coping strategies, help them when they experience the flow, when the student experiences the flow, and that's a creative process, when everything else in the world disappears. It's so transformative and such a gift that we give our children when we give them a high-quality arts education. And then for the academically unmotivated student, for whatever reason, learning is difficult, they're not interested, the arts give them a reason to wake up, get to school. And in some cases, and I've had students come to me and know that the arts are where they want, that's what they want to do, that's what they're aspiring to be, and they have told me, I have to get my GPA up. So guess what? It inspires them to do well across the board. Those are just three different, I guess, categories of students that I've seen repeated like it's not an unusual situation. A few of the facts, that in the past seven years, we have expanded our, just in visual arts, from eight to sixteen. Times that by the five academies that we've expanded, we have only so many students to draw from. We have a limited population. So when you look at enrollments, you may see a class that's running, four kids, two, eight, nine. How does that work? It works when you have a team of teachers that dedicate it and take independent students. I have not, and I am not aware, in the middle school or the high school, turned away one student that wanted to take an elective because it didn't fit in their schedule. So what's appropriate? Well, it depends on the student. Do they come during lunch? Do I work with them during my prep? Is it a blended experience? Do they come every other day? Do they join another class but have a totally different curriculum? Those are all options. So what I've learned in the last seven years, since the academy, since the flexibility and autonomy, is don't shut it down before you consider all the options. So we transfer that to our students. Come up with the ideas, come up with the proposals, you're part of this solution, and they have been coming to party. We've been listening to their feedback, that's how our program of studies has expanded. That's how we have students achieving at high levels with awards, but more importantly than awards are their own ideas, finding ways to engage in the arts deeper and really engage. I've been teaching for twenty-two years. The last seven years, I have redefined what engagement means. We have great kids in our district. Our families care about education, and they send that message to their children. So they come to school, and I used to say, I'd come in, I'd be working, I'm doing a great job. They're doing exactly what I'm asking them to do. Today, I work walking, they're all working, there's energy, a different energy, that's all I can explain. They're not doing the same thing, one next to the other. They're engaged. Eight years ago, where I thought they were engaged over here, here, those kids were in the middle, they're complying. There's a difference. They know how to play school. Teacher gives them the job. The rubric tells them what to do, they do it, no complaints, do a good job. Now, they're coming up with the ideas. We're building the expectations together. They're engaged. There's a difference.
Could I interrupt you for just for one second?
Yeah.
Now, I apologize for not letting everybody know beforehand.
Yep.
We tried to adhere to past practices of five minutes per speaker.
Okay.
But sometimes we don't know if there's twenty other speakers that would like to speak, so if you keep that in mind.
I will.
Thank you very much, and I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, thank you for doing that, I appreciate it. Okay, so personalized instruction, and it's all coming because the students are part of this process. And that's what I'm concerned that we might be giving up. Parents are happy, students are happier, they appreciate what the opportunities they're given. I noticed four years ago, I had a student say thank you to me when they left the classroom. I just noticed yesterday that I don't think this benefit in studio, that any of the, at least ninety percent of the kids, every single day they leave and this month, they say, "Thank you, have a good day, thank you." So I think that that's data we're thinking about. Parents, I have, as the department chair, I have the opportunity to see parents at concerts, performances, gallery openings, exhibits. They're thrilled with the opportunities their kids have. Okay, so I understand this is a tremendous task that you are faced with, with the budget, and I do appreciate how difficult it must be. I'm sorry, I can't appreciate it, but I do. And I know it's complicated, but as the department chair, I did feel like it would be irresponsible that I didn't share some of this with you. I do believe that community values a strong art education and that families can come to expect that their children will have access to it. Concerns. If you do not fill the retired teacher's position, we go down to two art teachers in the middle high school, studio art teachers, the books will stay free because we didn't have video back in the day, but two studio art teachers. We haven't had that since the early days, that's almost forty years. And so, two teachers between the two buildings, I am concerned that will diminish what we can accomplish with students. Our primary responsibility would be our scheduled classes and the students with it, because I anticipate that. Class hours are going to be in the mid twenties, probably. I don't see how we can accommodate independent students. Fewer teachers, fewer sections, fewer sections, maybe more students are not going to be able to get the classes that they want. And just a concern, I wonder how the middle school, the middle school teen model will impact the fine performing arts. I know when they had it before, eighth grade did not have art. Some seventh graders did, so you'd leave sixth grade, and there were potentially students that left elementary school and did not have an art class until they got to the high school, and probably just took the one semester that was required because they needed to graduate, but they were so out of the game. That's a concern. I don't know how cool that can end up being, but. And then elementary teachers traveling to building concerns, maybe because there's only one art, only each one, and I understand how difficult this must be for you. And then considering instrumental lessons outside of school day, I don't know, other parents, do the families have support so that all students can access these lessons? Or is it going to be curfew? And I don't know if they are going to be outside, scheduled outside of the school day, but, and I know David Schumont spoke a couple weeks ago, so it's still a concern. Okay, and then some of the accomplishments beyond anything like an award or recognition. We have students leading clubs and pottery, dance camp, fashion, fire studios. We've had students do veteran gay projects, where they photograph veterans throughout the community, free of charge, and then exhibits in the state house, and throw up community student proposals for community service, teaching community art classes, summer studies at Parsons, Rhode Island School of Design, craft in New York, Mass Art, Montserrat full scholarship to Cooper Union for a student last year. Just so you know, Cooper Union accepts sixty students, and they received thousands of applications. This student received a full bill to Cooper Union at Penn Tucket. Our students have solo chills, they have pop-up chill, the new report, seventh and eighth graders that take high school classes, we have elementary students able to take class of high school first period because their school doesn't start until eight-thirty. So parents who drop a student off, and this is isolated situations, these students needed it, it worked for them for different reasons. Parents who drop them off at seven-thirty, they join, say, my art class or percussion class, and then they will go to school at eight-thirty and start their day. So those are just opportunities that have happened in the past that are really unusual for public education. And Mass Art Saturday Studios, we're the only school in the state that supports our students too by transporting them there. Thanks to the Kenny Fowler Foundation for supporting that transportation cost, and we start that March sixteenth. Rhythm Cafe and that place.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If another individual would like to speak?
Hi there, my name is Danielle Oliver, I'm a special ed teacher in the district. I've been here for fifteen years initially as a speech pathologist, and I've worked in many of the buildings in the district. I was prompted to get my special education certification because I love what I do working with children, but case loads became too high as a speech pathologist, and I was asked to go between three buildings and felt very ineffective ethically, couldn't do that. So I was hired to be the language-based math teacher. Over the years, this has become a now or small group math teacher because, you know, the needs have changed, the numbers have grown. Initially, I would have three to seven, eight kids in a class with a paraprofessional for the higher numbers. for the higher numbers. It's grown, the need has grown for kids who struggle and cannot be good in the general ed classrooms. So my numbers have grown, and I have many of the special ed teachers. I am so thankful that Mr. Hodges asked about, you know, who's going to take on these numbers, because special ed numbers are not going down, they're going up. And the severity and complexity of the kids that we deal with every day are going up. Gone are the days that you just have, like, a dyslexic child, or, you know, they come, it's very compounded and complex. So the behaviors in the classroom, even in small groups, they have social-emotional issues, psychological issues, I mean, there's just so many different things that are going on. So to see, you know, the red numbers, I'm thankful that people got those up and you were able to tell me. But I'm wondering how accurate this fiscal year, budget year, over-year staffing by cost centering position is? Because, yes, Bagnell says it has six special ed teachers, one per grade level, but they also have special ed teachers in their language program. They have a new social-emotional program, so I'm not sure if there are those who are working on it. But I'm cautious and have become untrusting with, you know, at the middle school since I've been there, we had two special ed teachers retire. We used to have two special ed teachers per grade level for the inclusion kids, that's down to one each now, one per grade level. So next year, with 52-